Is there a motion going closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Be it resolved, Montgomery County Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby into closed meeting for the purpose of discussion of the following. Section 2.2-3711, discussion consideration or interview prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, disciplinary, resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. One, New River Community College Board. Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Fitzkaski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven Ohs.
In closed session. Is there a motion coming out of closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has conveyed a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meetings was conducted in conformity with Virginia laws. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion made to closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Fitzkaski?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven Ohs.
Now we go to invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. I'll turn it over to Ken Administrator.
If we could stand for a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, first item on our agenda this evening, we have four public hearings and I guess we'll need to open and close each one, Marty, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Our first public hearing is a boundary line adjustment with the town of Christiansburg for .36 of an acre. Tax map number 530-2-87A1 adjacent to Giles Drive Southeast and Curtis Drive Southeast in the Shawsville Magisterial District.
Is there any discussion?
No one signed up.
You did, didn't you?
I just read it and I'm sorry.
Okay. For this part, we'll open up for public comment. If you have any comments, please step forward, state your name and address, you'll have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close this part.
Board members, our next public hearing this evening is a boundary line adjustment request with the town of Christiansburg, Falling Branch Road, Reagan's Point subdivision. This is to incorporate within the town of Christiansburg approximately 26.043 acres. Tax map numbers 95 dash, excuse me, 94-5-1 and 94-5-2 adjacent to Falling Branch Road, Reagan's Point subdivision, and Interstate 81 northbound entrance ramp D at exit 118B in the Shawsville Magisterial District.
We'll open this portion for public comment. No one signed up, but if you'd like to step forward, state your name, address, you have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close this part.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing number three this evening is a boundary line adjustment with the town of Christiansburg for 176.374 acres. This is the Crosspoint Four Square Conference Center to incorporate within the town of Christiansburg approximately 176.374 acres. Property commonly known as Crosspoint Four Square Conference Center adjacent to Route 8 and Interstate 81 in the Reiner Magisterial District.
Open this portion for public comment. If you'd like to comment, please step forward, state your name and address, you have five minutes. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close this part.
And Mr. Chair and Board members, last public hearing this evening is a public hearing related to the fiscal year 2019-2020, a budget amendment by adding fiscal year 2019 carryover funds. And this is an intent to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2020 budget by more than 1% of the total expenditures shown in the currently adopted budget by adding carryover funding appropriated in fiscal year 19 for various projects and purchase orders that were not completed before year end.
If anybody would like to come in on this part, please step forward, state your name and address, you have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close this section.
That's all we have.
Next be public address. No one has signed up. If you'd like to come forward and speak, please come forward, state your name and address, you'll have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close public address. Addendum.
No addendum this evening, sir?
No addendum. Bless your heart.
Moving right along?
Moving right along. Items of consent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Fitzkaski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven Ohs.
Move right along into work session. Is there a motion going to work session?
It's all moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Fitzkaski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Spahn?
Aye.
Chair Keane?
Aye.
Seven Ohs.
In work session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. At our last meeting, there was some question about funding for a mobile unit at Harding Elementary School and Assistant Superintendent Krantz was with us that night and said that he would be back with some more information and Mr. Krantz is glad to have you back with more information this evening.
Thank y'all very much. I did a quick slide show, just to kind of go over where we're at and what the issues are. This gives you a picture of an eight classroom modular unit, picture half of that unit would look at Harding from an aerial view. When you look at a modular unit, some things to keep in mind, a brick and mortar always will be even the longest life, 50 years and even longer depending on how you maintain. A brick and mortar classroom is about quarter of a million dollars when you look at everything all in. A modular building is going to be between 25 to 35 years and that's about $135,000 per classroom all in. And then a trailer which would be comparable is going to be about $125,000 all in. And when I say all in, that's bringing your water, your sewer, your utilities, plus all your data communication. So everything that's in a classroom, you want to put inside that unit that's outside of the building. So that's what I mean by all in cost. This is, and you can see this is a basic model, something that when people lease them, they do wooden ramps. You can see the white skirting, it's kind of like your, like a siding type material. People have used these as a more permanent building, you'll see them do a four-foot brick facade to kind of dress them up. You also have the ability with these units that you can put metal roots on them, you can do different things. This is just your basic unit that most districts will lease. The inside of the classroom, this is what it looks like, and another view of it, you can put inside these units as well the same projector system that we have inside our main rooms if it's going to be more permanent, or you can do mobile type smart board setups so that the children have everything in those rooms and teachers have everything as far as data, fire, security, everything that's inside a regular classroom, they would have in these rooms as well. And then this is what the rest of it is in our basic design, we have a separate boys and girls bathrooms and it would look similar to what you see here. Some things we talked about, and I know y'all got the emails, so I'm not going to go through it, but the discussions, we first started this on the 15th when the superintendent presented his statement of needs to our school board. We had this discussion at the grade of Montgomery, we had it on grid. On March, we gave during our joint school board meeting, because that was one of his main points on the statement of needs and that carried over with our school board on their presentation of FY '20 budget. And then during our discussion of the budget process in April, we also touched base on Harding again about the enrollment and the challenges that the Blacksburg had versus Christiansburg and the other districts that we have in the school system. We had a discussion about a capital asset. A capital asset in accounting terminology is an asset that's expected to generate value in an extended period of time. So anything greater than typically 12 months becomes a potential capital asset. Characteristics of a capital asset is that it has a useful life more than one year, it has a capitalization limit, and each company and district does it differently. There is no magical bullet. I've seen some places do as low as $500. In our case, and you'll see in the next slide, the county's rule is $50,000 in a minimum life of five years. And there's nothing wrong between the two definitions, it is what it is. It's not something, an asset is not going to be something that you're selling in the normal course of business. It's not going to be imminent. Also, it's not something that converts into cash rent. It can through the sales process, but it's not something that you're going to have people come to your door and just buy from you. Under, and we talked about it real quick, $50,000 under y'all's policy, I've got this right out of y'all's Board of Supervisors Policy Meeting of the January 19th, and that's what y'all's rule is, $50,000 in a life of five years. Now, how are we going to use the $200,000 that we brought the other night? We would be bringing water, sewer, and electricity to the site where we're putting the modular units at. Two, we're going to wire the modular unit as we talked about to the fire alarm, security system, and data communication system. So everything that's in that school building classrooms would be what's inside that modular classroom. We have to, under ADA rules, install ramps. In our case, we're proposing to do aluminum ramps, that way it's something we can continue to reuse with the work we're talking about at the CES, CPS, and BEs. Those are situations where we may, probably about CPS and CES, have modules as we're moving students around and those ramps can be reused, whereas if you do wooden ramps, once you build it, it's kind of there. And the estimated cost of that on the high end is $200,000 and that was the number that we presented in that letter two weeks ago. Based off of everything that's there from the county perspective, what's based in your policy, and then looking at the lease accounting rules have changed. Government Accounting Standards Board released number 87, which is lease accounting, and that changed for everybody in the United States. Really, there's no more capital leases, I mean operating leases. Anytime an asset is going to be used more than 12 months, it's going to be a capital lease. Clearly, if we afford with Harding's modular units, they're going to be there more than a year. There's nothing that I've seen, heard, or believe can happen that you could have another room built, or rooms built, and not have those units there 12 months from now. Now, that's not saying it's the perfect, that's just Tommy's opinion, but I think they would be there a period greater than 12 months. I think at the end of the day, what we're asking for is an allowable item under capitalization rules. Bringing the utilities and so forth to the site is something that improves the site and if there is ever an addition done to that site, those can be at that point that you can put your addition in and not have that expense again. Under your policy, it's greater than $50,000, it's going to have a life greater than five years. And under lease accounting, it's going to definitely qualify as a capital lease, not as an operating lease. We talked about some numbers and I apologize that night for not having these off the top of my head particularly with the purchase price, but I was just brain dead, I could not have given you a number no matter what you kept asking. But right now, the annual lease payment is $68,355.60. If we purchased the units instead of paying our first lease payment, which we have not incurred in the lease payment check, it's $277,955. Now, not included in either the annual lease payment or in the purchase price, they're set up in delivery charge, that's a separate charge and that's here whether you lease the unit or you buy it, it's the same price. So there's no difference. The payback is 4.06 years. So basically, if we're going to keep the unit longer than four years, four years or more, it's clearly better to buy it than it is to lease. I believe based off of what we've seen, the numbers that Davenport reported, we're projecting that in year eight, in 2026, we could begin work on a Harding, a Gilbert Lincoln, and a Morgan Beach. So if that's true, if that holds true, then clearly we'd be on a four-year period. Any questions? And I didn't even put her by sleep.
My question is kind of easy and I reserve the right to have more questions soon. So if we purchase the modular unit today and we locate it at Harding Avenue Elementary and say in six years, we are able to do an upgrade there, we have this modular unit, can it be moved?
Yes, ma'am. What it would do is it breaks apart, so two classrooms and a hallway is two sections. And we would just break those apart and pull them out and, you know, via semi, move it to whatever the next destination is.
Which would be hopefully not in Montgomery County.
Well, but if you think about it, say it's four or five years from now, in all likelihood, CHS will have modules on its campus. Now, it all depends, we haven't gone to, I can't say with certainty, but you look at the challenge of CPS, CES, you look at CHS, and there's going to be other challenges that we're not even talking about tonight that I think there's a strong possibility that unit would be used somewhere else.
Do you have a position or an idea on lease versus purchase at this point?
Gosh, I knew you were going to ask that question.
Well, you're welcome, I got it out of the way quick for you.
I just hadn't presented to my school board, so. And, you know, like I said, if you're going to, if we're going to hold these beyond four years and Ms. Goon is behind me, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. But if we are going to have that unit, whether it's at a Harding or if we're going to use that unit at a CPS or CHS or wherever the other opportunity can be, then it's better for us to buy the unit.
Okay.
The debt capacity question, does that assume that the schools will use 100% of our debt capacity?
It did on that schedule, but it's not necessarily true as we said, and that, I think, and if we did, and I'll clarify, I mean, CPS and CES have our greatest needs just because of their numbers right now, with CHS right behind it. So I think year seven, eight, you know what I'm saying, Mr. Tuck, if leased, would be the earliest you'd probably get in Harding.
Actually, my point is, the county's going to have some needs and we're being able to do some projects cash funding, but we're going to have other needs as they progress, whether it be a detention center that is old and is going to have to be addressed. But the county is going to potentially have to be able to borrow money to address some of our concerns. So is that using up 100% of the debt capacity by the schools so the county has no room to be able to borrow funds?
It is, it's a part on the outside, not knowing the county's needs, but I fully understand that the county's going to have needs that I'm just not aware of, so there's some piece of that debt you will need.
Right. But if their projection is eight to 10 years using 100% of it, and let's say that we borrowed $5 million to do, whether it be a park or whether it be to take care of the Shawsville Rescue Squad, then that's going to eat into that debt capacity and push that out further. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir, but then I think you sit down as both our school board and the Board of Supervisors and look at the priority of the projects and that list of projects could reshuffle itself.
Okay. As far as, and you went through a little bit of a history and I understand the school board meeting, I was present for the, at that point in time, the discussion was around 1.5 million, I believe, when you made that initial presentation to the joint meeting, and that number has then, it came down quite a bit.
And the difference was, the thought was, we were going to be putting modules at CPS and/or CES and we got away from that.
And it's just Harding?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And in regard, so that's one of the reasons that the price has come down somewhat?
Yes, sir, and I'd gladly send you an email showing you the recap of it.
That's fine, and I understand that aspect of it. In regards to the specifics in your budget, this past budget?
Yes, sir.
Did you have in your budget, did I miss it, or it could have, in regards to a line specifically for the rental of the units or the purchase of the rental? Was that a line item in your budget?
It was a discussion that was focused on, at that point when we presented, it could have been funded out of either the operating budget and/or the capital budget, but it was not a specific request that I consider saying this line item.
Because I tried to go back through, but I did not see it, but I thought I might have missed it.
No, sir, you did not.
So it was not an item in your budget? It was something y'all were discussing at that point in time, but it didn't make it to this year's budget, even though you're going to need it in August?
The intent, as we were talking about it with our board and in our budget, was if we couldn't get it out of our capital, okay, wherever the capital was at that time, that we then were going to be looking at our operating funds, which typically, you know, we call it year-end fund, but some places call it like a vacancy reserve where you budget 100%, but you know you're only going to have maybe 95, you know, some percentage of positions vacant, so those funds could have been used.
One of the things that was new information to me, and you may have misspoke, and I've misspoke before, I've misspoke in court before, it happens to anybody.
Yes, sir.
But when I heard that, and that's why I asked the follow-up question, are you saying at least 10 years? And if we are to push this back, we could be having these mobile units there for at least 10 years we're looking at?
They could, and these modular units are designed, and that's why I gave y'all the useful life of it, they are designed to be there long-term. They're not, they're not like a traditional trailer, it's more of a short-term type situation.
I think that covers my questions, but thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Tommy, so when you gave the purchase price of that at $277,955, that's, you'd still have to have the $200,000 to install it and to set it up, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I was looking at an eight-year lease, I mean, comes in at $546,000.
Right. I could buy eight classrooms basically, I mean, plus.
That's, that's pretty close to, I mean, that's not much of a difference in over eight years, about $150,000 or so difference between leasing it and buying it?
Well, in eight years, you'd spend right around $525,000. If we bought it today, it'd be $277,000, so it's almost a two-for-one if you get out, that's why at four years, it's equal.
Yeah, that's part, I don't think I quite understand what you were talking about. So at four years, that's when you have the opportunity to purchase it?
No, sir, we can buy it today, we could buy it at the end of year one, we could buy it at the end of year two. If we purchased it today, it would cost us $277,000. If we leased it for four years, it would cost us $277,000 basically. So if we go into year five and we continue to lease it, now we've spent $68,000 more than, than if we had just purchased it.
Got you. All right.
So that's what I was trying to say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Got it.
I have a couple of questions. So the $68,000 lease, if you go over four years, then you're wasting money basically?
Yes, sir.
It's going to cost you more.
Correct.
Is there an option, I guess the least to own, that would lessen that? So at the end of four years, what you're saying is if you lease it, you lose that $68,000 you spent.
You get somewhat of a reduction, but for example, if we leased it for one year at $68 and said, let's see where everything plays out, and we wanted to buy it a year from now, that price would go from $278 to $77 to $272,000. That's all it changed.
Okay.
Now, the further out it goes, the more you start seeing it drop, but it's not going to equal out. You know, there's a point in time where, and it's going to be around the four-year mark, where if you hold it, if the intent is to hold that unit 10 years, and in all likelihood, if you're holding a modular unit 10 years out, unless the enrollment just completely goes backwards and all this capacity frees up, in all likelihood, you're going to end up having that modular in use somewhere else inside the district.
Right.
And if that's the case, then clearly we're better off buying those units than we are leasing that unit.
Okay. That's all I have.
Talking about the use of units, like, when you get down the road, however many years it is, and you start thinking about the Blacksburg Strand Elementary Schools, if you had to do a renovation at one of the other schools, could you use those units to put children in while you might be renovating part of a building?
Yes, ma'am.
And when you like collapse them down and move them, does that do anything detrimental to them or are they pretty much built so you, my understanding is they're built to go?
They're built to move. Now, when you do move them and bring them back, that skirting you saw on the unit down on the block on the bottom there, sometimes some of that skirting gets damaged, it's fairly cheap to put new skirting in. Sometimes your connections, you just got to dress it up, a good carpenter can do it, but they're made to be taken apart and moved. They're not intended to just sit.
The heating and cooling inside the classrooms, is that like self-regulated?
Each classroom will have their own heating and cooling element, and that's one thing that teachers like.
Yeah.
Because they're not relying on a central office system, it's in their particular classroom. The other thing, when we did them in Richmond, Green Elementary I'll use, we brought in a 12-classroom setup along with a modular dining room because the school was just that much over capacity. And we had teachers initially that expressed some reservations, and there was one teacher particularly who had been with us about 35 years, who had a lot of reservations about going out into the modular units. And once we had them set up and once we had everything connected and once she was able to go in that room after the first week, she wouldn't have moved back into Green Elementary's permanent building because she said it was just a better environment. But not everybody's going to say that, I mean, but it is, it's a good sound system and it's a good alternative to brick and mortar system if we don't have money to do it, which, you know, we just have a limited dollar.
So you're not hearing the classroom next door?
No, ma'am, you won't. And we made sure that Green Elementary, Broad Rock Elementary, and Richmond, if you wanted to chat, are two that we put in. Broad Rock has 24 modular classrooms today and a modular dining room, and you could contact both schools and they both love it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
A couple of questions. I think in the last meeting, you mentioned that moving these modular units isn't the objective, maybe, or it's more difficult to, you know, to move them. I thought you said something like that and tonight it's clearly...
It's on your permitting side. I mean, every time you move those units, you've got to set up your utilities, you've got to bring your data lines, you have to go through the permitting process. But that's true if I move trailers. You know, in both the two respective towns, it's definitely a process that we have to follow and in the county also, but, you know, I don't want to make it sound like I can just go back on a truck and move it, I can't do that, I've got to have all the necessary approvals which means I've got to have drawings, I've got to have footer drawings, I've got to have my soil tested.
Gotcha.
All the things we need to do today at Harding, we'd have to do anywhere else we remove it.
So these units, you said are good for 25 to 35 years, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
I assume that if we kept them at Harding and never moved them, they'd probably last till the 35th year or so versus if you start moving around things... till the 35th year or so, versus if you start moving around things, it probably is not going to last as long, because, you know...
That's the risk you run, but that's not necessarily true.
Okay.
I mean, it's really just, any kind of asset like that's a matter of how well you upkeep it. You know, if you upkeep, even a brick-and-mortar building, if you build it and don't do the deferred maintenance on that building, it's not going to last you 50 years. So it's the same thing with a trailer, with the modular unit, with our personal, you know, the district vehicles. If we don't maintain those assets, then they're not going to last the useful life that we have projected on them. If you do, they're going to last there.
So again, can you tell us the difference between these modular units and the units that were at Falling Branch?
Falling Branch, now, Falling Branch is before my time. As I understand it, they were more of a trailer-type setup. A trailer is built to be simply that, one, basically, you do a double-wide and you get two classes in it. But the classes you do in a double-wide aren't going to be as big as two classrooms I've got here. You know, our classrooms and these units are going to run 850 to 950 square feet, which is more of what you see in our brick-and-mortar setups, when, as you do a double-wide in a trailer situation, just because of the limited, you know, the construction of it. You know, you can put in 20 kids, but you're going to be squeezed on top of each other and you're not going to have, you know, maybe a 550 to 600 square feet. You're not going to be anywhere close to what the square foot we have in a regular classroom.
And then the upkeep, the cost for upkeep for both, I mean, the Falling Branch trailers were there for a long time, I understand. And I don't know, you know, I wasn't here either. But I heard some not great stories about them also.
Trailers that aren't kept up. And we have some trailers at CES that you start to see your flooring rot out. You see that you don't have an awning coming off of your door. So when I go out into the weather, I'm getting hit immediately with rain or snow, whatever the situation is. Trailers by their nature aren't grounded as well as a modular unit is or a brick-and-mortar building. I don't know here, but in other parts of the country that I've been in, in certain weather conditions, we are, as a rule mandatory, we had to evacuate the trailers. So we're moving students constantly between trailer and our permanent building. Whereas a modular, we have to do, for example, the footer calculations we have to do on Harding, or as extensive if I did foundations on a brick-and-mortar type situation. So it's just a different audience and a different price point.
Thank you.
Just have a couple of questions. On the, you said it costs you $200,000 to put the electric, water, plumbing, and everything to it?
Correct.
To buy them is $277.
So we'd be at $477.
Right. But to buy them is $277.
Yes, sir.
Do you have that money to purchase the, if we give you the $200?
I would have to speak to the board, but I think the board would approve that. But I have to get my board's approval.
Right. But I'm just saying, you have that money.
I believe I can make that work, yes, sir. But I have to have the board, I mean, I don't mean to be evasive, but I've got to have the board's approval on that.
I'm just asking a question. If we approved, I mean, if we approved $200,000, the more I'll know if you've got the money to finish the project.
We would have the $68,000 that we've already put up, which we got set aside for the first year lease, so the difference would be $210,000, basically, that I would have to come up with. And I believe that's something I could do.
Okay. One more question, just for, just for me. What size outside walls is it? Two-four or two-sixes?
Two-six.
Two-six?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any more questions?
No more questions. No more questions, Ellen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tommy. Mr. Chair and Board Members, the next item we have on work session this evening is the discussion of transportation projects. And I believe Ms. Gibson's going to lead us through that discussion or join in on the discussion.
My first drive didn't work, so I went back to glue another one. Sorry about that. Found it. Graphically, it might be challenged, but it looks like most of it's going to be here.
Well, that's cool. How'd you do that?
Got me. The words look okay, so that's good. I'm going to speak to you briefly about revenue sharing, but also there's some other elements of transportation that I wanted to talk to you guys about. Back in 2017, when I talked to you about revenue sharing, let you know that there were some changes that VDOT made. There were pretty substantial changes. And we're now going into the second two-year cycle. We have the different caps that were put on the projects. And we're kind of used to the rules that they've given us, as far as things like when surplus funds can be transferred and things like that. The application process changed at that time, too, to use in what they call their smart portal to submit applications. Again, it's a two-year request cycle, and you have revenue sharing two-year requests and an off-year where you don't have your smart scale two-year requests. So we're always doing some sort of transportation-related applications. But you're requesting for '21 and '22 at this time, and then those funds are made available at the beginning of those fiscal years. But a new requirement is the pre-application requirement. So just to apply this fall, I have to make sure that we have anything we're interested in submitted by July 1st. So that's a new requirement. And for those of you who are used to us talking about revenue sharing, it's usually October when we're talking about it. But this year, we have to make some decisions early on. So that's why I'm here today. In the first two-year cycle, so '19 and '20, our requests looked like this. We requested a little bit of additional funding for Prices Fork, because that was just getting ready to go to construction. And we had had some utility issues and things, and we felt like we needed some space there. We also requested three, what would be called Tier Three projects. They were for some improvements out of Union Valley Road and some reconstruction and paving at Pike and Pine Hollow. We also talked specifically about Route Eight project at that time. And I told you that we hadn't scored very well on our smart scale applications. And working with VDOT, we had the idea to break out part of it and make it revenue sharing. And if we were to get those funds when we submitted our smart scale, because they look at a cost-benefit ratio, they would have seen that you guys put up some money, and that would have helped our smart scales score. So we actually did get the funding for the Route Eight project, but because they haven't made any decisions about smart scale, we don't actually have the project starting. Because if the smart scale project is funded, then the two will move forward together and it'll be a larger project instead of the piece that we submitted. Either way, whether it's this project on its own or the full smart scale, they're both very good improvements for Route Eight and the Riner area. So we did receive the Prices Fork. Tier One is what is typically funded, and Tier One means existing projects in the world of VDOT. And so that was an ongoing project. It started before I did, and most of you know it's under construction. And so it will finish up this year. So I don't know what we'll talk about. We're not talking about these turn lanes. But anyway, it ended up being, it's a great project. It did come in around $2 million, which seems like a lot, because we used existing right away, and we're only putting in three turn lanes. But it's going to be a great project for that area when it's finished up. And Route Eight came in as a Tier Two project, and as I mentioned, it will expand those intersection improvements. So if you saw what happened at the Union Valley, Fairview Church, Route Eight intersection, which was an H sub project, this expands that all the way up to where the school improvements are. It kind of fills that gap of about 1,000 feet to make that functional part of the road more functional. So we're still waiting right now to find out how that's going to proceed, but we're pretty excited about it. And this was the sketch that I showed you, where we're just kind of filling in the blanks between the school project and the H sub project. So in talking about what I would recommend that we do this year for '21 and '22, my recommendation is that we continue with Pike and Pine Hollow. Those numbers aren't exact. I want to say one's 130 and one's 160. We made some tweaks just based on the changes from now, between '17 when we talked about this and now. But I'd like to not apply for Union Valley Road. It's a series of drainage improvements and some other work. In talking with VDOT, our recommendation is to add that to the six-year plan. They know what they'd like to do out there. They've been dealing with this issue for a while. Basically, the road floods out, and they need to go up a bank and cut it back and put in some pipes. And they said they, if the board added it to the six-year plan, they could start. So that's my recommendation, these two smaller projects. Honestly, I know there's a lot of needs, but knowing we're getting ready to get two years' worth of funding on Route Eight, and knowing what we already have going on and in the queue, capacity-wise, these would be great, smaller projects. VDOT would lead them, not staff. And so I think that they're possible. They would still be Tier Three projects. But as VDOT said when I asked them, they said, you'll never get it if you don't apply. So that's where we're going. And that's all I have. If you guys have any questions for me, I just wanted to make sure before we put in the pre-application, that you sort of knew the direction that we were looking at taking.
Having questions? Sarah? Ms. Mary? What kind of work would they be doing on Pike and Pine Hollow?
Both of those are some minor reconstruction and paving.
So it is included, including paving? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, you're welcome.
I'm motion to come out of work session. Need a motion to come out of work session?
So moved.
Second.
Ma'am, Secretary Kowro, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Fiskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven O's.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair and Board Members, we have several items of new business this evening. The first item of new business is...
Old business.
Oh, would you want to do old business first? I just jumped right over that. I'm sorry.
Roberts.
I know. I was looking at all those underneath business and totally missed old business. I apologize. We do have one item of old business this evening, and that is the transfer of school capital funds for the Harding Elementary School modular classroom units. This was discussed, as we mentioned earlier, at the last meeting. And as a result of the work session tonight, is back on your agenda for consideration.
I'd like to make a motion that we do this.
I'll second it.
First and second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, in looking at this, the seven years I've been on the board and seven and a half, it's been my goal to try to get as many kids out of mobile units. I spent the first, my teenage years, setting up mobile homes. I have family members that live in mobile homes. They take great pride in those homes. I've sold mobile homes, and we were told we weren't allowed to call them mobile homes or trailers. We had referred to them as manufactured housing. But it's been my goal. And in looking at this situation and how it's come about, and the reason I asked about the budget questions, I did not see it in their budget. I didn't recall seeing it in their budget. It wasn't in their budget, based on what Tommy said. I appreciate him answering the questions. There were discussions about it, but how to pay for those mobile units, I don't think really were discussed in any kind of detail, because the price was still fluctuating. And frankly, the plan was changing week by week. It seemed like, you know, at one point in time, we had new school being purchased and built and planned, and then that plan changed and evolved. And frankly, I liked the plan of remodeling the schools. I think it's a good plan. I think that's something that several of us talked about two years ago. But if I cast that vote, I was one of those who did compromise. I wish, looking back, that $700,000, boy, that would make a big difference towards actually fixing this problem. And I compromised. So I'd better look at myself in the mirror and say, did I make a mistake when I did that, instead of putting the more money aside? And then for the first time, last meeting, I heard that those kids were going to be there at least 10 years. And that, they're talking eight to 10 years, if they use 100% of the county's debt capacity. And so I don't know what the answer is, but when it's not in the budget, and I'm looking at that and it's not in their budget, I think they may need to go back to the drawing board, or it's their decision, not ours, not mine, that the kids are going into mobile units. They're the ones who asked for more money, not for capital projects, but for operations. We did that to a large extent. They knew that they were going to have this need in August. That's their decisions. But my decision is not to put any more kids in mobile units or modular units. And so at this point in time, I cannot vote in favor of supplying this money. Now, if they've got it in their budget, and I think Supervisor King asked a question in superintendent during the budget process, if something comes up, how are y'all going to be able to do it? And he looked at you and he said, we're going to be able to find room in our budget, and we're going to be able to make it happen. If this is that important to them, this is the right way to go. But I don't believe it was the right way to go. I think when you start looking at the remodeling costs that we're seeing for Bellevue, that's a similar remodeling that we might be doing to Harding. We're talking about $5 million, $6 million. Now, the cost here today, as I hear it, set up is costing $200,000 for the plumbing and everything, but I still think there may be another cost that is involved, and then it's the rental. When that comes back, and that hasn't even been decided on their board, whether they're going to go to purchase or whether they're going to rent, they're still making that decision. And I respect Tommy, he's not an elected official. He says he can't make that decision. And that's the right thing for an administrator to say. But until we hear that, I'm not going to vote in favor of it. And I don't know how everybody else is going to vote, but that's the way I feel.
Thank you. It seems like we're back at capital expenses. And yeah, I now have regrets, too, on taking that money that we were going to put away for capital, which may have sped this project up to be more of a permanent fix. But it seems like we've come to that point now that we have to do something because of overcrowding. It has to be done now. And I'm hoping that the school board will see the wisdom in purchasing this unit. And that's, I think that's about the only place that we can go with it, so.
I want to wait.
You can't wait.
Well, I'm going to wait.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I've thought a lot about it. I've been on the fence and still am, kind of. I would feel better about it if I knew we were going to buy them. I think that's a lot of money, just to throw down a rat hole not to get back. I know they need something, and they've known they'd need something for a lot longer than just two years. But I know Christiansburg was put in, too. And Christiansburg's been waiting 20 years plus. So, I mean, I don't know what you do. You know, I'd like to see it be permanent. I don't, that's not an option right now, so.
Supervisor Bond?
I'd like a little bit of clarification. If someone, whether it's Mr. Meadows or Mr. Krantz, the $200,000 that we're voting on today is coming from where? In what category? Where is it coming from?
Schools capital. It's set aside for school capital, correct? That's what I, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we, they're asking for us to release that money?
The $200,000.
Because it is set aside for school capital, and they believe that this is the right priority for that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. So, I think it's clear that the need for infrastructure is necessary. They need the classrooms. That's what they've presented to us. Whether they lease or buy, they're still going to need the money for the infrastructure. Supervisor Tuck mentioned mobile units and stuff. These are modular units, which are different and more substantial, and I think that they're a better option than mobile units. That's why I asked the question about Falling Branch, so I could have a better understanding. The question about the debt capacity, when I've asked Mr. Meadows about debt capacity or whomever, we can't get a straight answer about that because we don't know what our revenue is going to be. And if our revenue's better in the next couple of years, our debt capacity is actually going to go up. Am I understanding that correctly?
Generally, yes.
So, projecting our debt capacity over the next decade is hard to do based on that. But what we do know is, if I'm saying this correctly, the schools would like us, I think it's about $30 million bond issue, for the next six years or so? Something like that? Isn't that what they're requesting? Over five?
Thirty-five million.
Thirty-five million over the next...
Three.
That's right. Okay, thirty. So, we do have a better idea that's saying, over the next three years, our debt capacity is at its limit. But beyond that, it's, we haven't made any commitments for that.
That's correct.
Okay.
I thought we had committed. We were saying that we were going to remodel and renovate Christiansburg High School for approximately $70 million.
My guess is that until we make that bond issue, that's not, or make the decision to make that bond issue, we haven't committed that. I don't know if that's a fair way to interpret, but...
That's the assumption we're running with as far as projecting out debt capacity right now, but until the board votes on anything.
And three years from now, our revenue could be completely different. It could be up, it could be down, and that would change the debt capacity. Okay. As far as this modular unit not being in their budget, I thought I heard Mr. Krantz say they knew that they were going to have to get this modular unit, and they did have it in their budget. But you used some terms that I wasn't quite sure exactly. You weren't sure where it was coming from, operations or capital, I think is what you said. So, you knew it was in there.
I'd like to know the line. If it is in there, I'd like to know the line.
And as I answered Mr. Tuck, I can't tell him because it wasn't in a specific line. And so, that is correct. That's what I told Mr. Tuck, and that's correct. But we generally, as a district, when I've looked at the history, I've been here a year and I've looked at the history, we have what we call year-end funds that become available. And the belief is, is that within our operations, we could have generated those funds to make whatever needs we did for the classrooms at Harding Elementary. But Mr. Tuck is correct, and he says, "Was it in a specific line?" I can't say, you know, it was in line ABC because we didn't have it specifically in it.
But you know that you have, you were going to, you wanted these modular units at Harding Avenue for a long while.
By the past four or five months, yes, ma'am. It definitely was now.
And you felt comfortable that you would be able to come up with the money?
Based off of our operating history, yes, ma'am. I felt comfortable.
And you were depending on the $200,000 in the school capital budget to help make that happen?
I mean, I believe that the school capital dollars are set aside to two cents. That, you know, when we allocated that $1,550 from FY19, as well as the three projects that we just asked to be closed, for example, like Falling Branch, and moved those into CHS, this completion of the athletic project, there was $200,000 that I, you know, believe that from an accounting perspective, a proper use would be on the Harding Avenue modular units. And that's where this request came from.
I see. And I don't know, Supervisor Shepherd, what you mean when you say, "Let's not throw this down a rat hole." I don't know what that means.
If you pay $68,000 today to lease it for a year, and then next year at this time, you buy them, you've just lost $60,000. That's what it sounded like to me. So, you've thrown it away, basically.
Well, you've actually used it for the use of the building for one year.
Yeah, but if you're going to buy them, buy them today, and you don't lose that $60,000, you can put it toward that purchase price.
If the money's available, right?
Yeah, that's the big question.
If the money's available, but no doubt, we need these units. Is that, am I hearing you correctly?
He's talking about using it relatively.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
I want to ask one more while he's here. And I had two, and I forgot one of them. The cost to move them in and set them up is an extra cost, right?
Right. Whether you buy them or rent them.
Do you know what that cost is?
It's about, it's about $65,000.
So, you are sure you have that in your budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all.
That and $68,000 budget.
Supervisor B?
I would hope that you might be able to find the money to purchase them because I agree they're going to be there for a while. And I like the fact that they are reusable and movable because I think, because as the county grows, so will the student body, especially, I'm thinking that depending on what tech does, you know, with people moving in and everything. So, we know there's going to be a need. There always has been a need for extra space when you're renovating or whatever you're doing. We've got to get the show on the road because the kids are coming. And so, I'm in favor of this, and I'm hoping that maybe in the budget, you can find a way to purchase them. The students have to go somewhere. And, you know, saying that, you know, you're not willing to put them in mobile, I get what you're saying, Chris, but they actually really have to go somewhere because the school is overcrowded.
Right. But that's their decision, not mine.
Right. So, it is...
And so, that's when you're saying that, I'm talking about, and you've heard Mr. Krantz talking about using rollover funds, that's their decision. And I understand, they have to make tough decisions. And that's why I'm saying, that's a decision on them, not on me.
Right. So, I support, I'm supporting this, and I know that the faculty was involved with, you know, where maybe, you know, these units should go, and the community has been informed. And I'm very familiar with the Harding Avenue community since I taught there for 37 years. So, but thank you for your information, and especially with the difference in the cost between buying and leasing.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to call them.
I'm going to take my time. Can I go now?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the way that I view the conflict that we're having right now on this subject is not necessarily, it's not that we didn't know about it. All of us knew that this was coming because we have been discussing it since January, and I think all of us acknowledge that. It's more about the $200,000 being a capital expense on my end, and I'm hearing a little bit of that from my colleagues up here, and figuring out if this is actually a capital expense. Personally, I find it much easier to digest it as a capital expense if we actually purchase the modular unit, because then it's not a lease. Now, I understand that our definition of a capital expense is in use for five years and expense over $50,000, so it meets the definition. But there's my personal rub on that. And then also, this whole discussion is coming on the heels of a big capital discussion that kind of dominated the budget debate this cycle, in which we were told that there wasn't a need for savings of capital. And so, that's, I think, what I've gathered from speaking with people this week is that that's part of the problem, is that now there's an immediate capital need, and we're clearing out the capital fund for something that's questionably a capital expense in the first place. I do plan on voting in favor of it because I acknowledge that it is completely needed for Harding Avenue, and I don't personally see a reasonable alternative solution for the children that are attending that school. But I would like to say on record that I would highly encourage the school board to make whatever steps necessary towards purchasing this, because we're looking, as you've told us, this could be in place at Harding Avenue for 10 years, possibly even longer, possibly shorter. But if we're looking at just a 10-year expense, we're at almost $700,000. So, we're looking at over $400,000 in costs related to a modular unit. So, I would just really like to send the message that I think that this is an ideal consideration for purchase, because it will save us $400,000 over many years. And that's a lot of money. I mean, that's how many classrooms? So, again, I do plan on voting in favor of this, but I also want my colleagues to know that I understand the considerations and the trouble that they're having with it as well.
Good job.
Thanks.
I just got one question from Marty. If this is approved, can we put a stipulation on it if the school board buys them, purchases the trailers?
I don't know, probably not. I mean, not anything that could be enforceable. Now, if they would be willing to agree to that in some way, it'd be more of a mortal agreement.
If the majority says, "I'll agree to it," if they purchase the mobile units?
I don't think that's anything you could probably enforce, because you're going to give them the money, and then it's going to be up to them to spend it.
Well, I'm talking about if you put stipulations on it.
Right.
You can't do that?
I don't think you can put stipulations on it that'd be enforceable. You either give them money or you don't. Now, you could tell them, "We only want to give it to you if you buy it." And if they did, you know, if they then used it and didn't buy it, then it'd be a breach of trust. But I don't know if you could, I really don't know if you could condition it.
That's the only question I got. Thank you. Any more discussion?
Sir, you do have a resolution in your packet under old business related to this matter, so the board may want to make a motion on that.
We already have a motion. We have a motion and a second.
You already have one.
Hold on, I was tired, I'm sorry.
Wake up. Wedding hangover.
I'm sorry. Ready for a vote?
Ma'am Secretary, call roll please.
Mr. Fiskowski?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bunn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
No.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Chair King?
As I stated before, we won't vote aye, but gentleman's agreement if they're bought.
Six ayes, one no.
Thank you. Now, we can do new business.
Now, we can do new business, yes, sir. I'm sorry. The item under new business this evening is issuance of revenue bond financing by the IDA of the city of Radford for SP Fairfax Cambridge LLC. You have information in your packet regarding this and a resolution in support of moving forward with this project.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Me. I have a question about it. And I think I answered this question when I was reviewing the documentation for it. Why is this being asked of Montgomery County when it's in the town of Blacksburg? Is it because Montgomery County's EDA is being asked for the money?
No, well, Blacksburg doesn't have an EDA.
Right.
Yeah, the county does. And nor does Blacksburg have a housing authority. Montgomery County doesn't either, and nor does Radford. So, Radford's IDA, IDA and EDAs are the same, just a preference of name. The reason we're being asked is because they're going through the IDA of Radford to finance a project in Montgomery. And under the, under state law, you have, the local governing body has to approve that project before they can, you know, use financing from a outside EDA or IDA.
I just wanted to be very clear why Montgomery County is being asked to approve something related to housing in the town of Blacksburg, and it's because we have an EDA, the town does not have an EDA.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted that to be quite clear, because when I initially read it, I thought this is not, so, thank you.
And if I could just tag on to that, because we had an earlier question as well, it does not impact the debt capacity of the county either.
Yeah, the county or Radford, they're a conduit.
And I personally, this, the project in Montgomery County is actually in my district, and so, I drove over to the property that it's referencing, and I think that that is a very well-needed investment at that community. It will be very nice for that property.
Any more discussion? Bunn?
I have a couple of questions of which I'd like answers to, and if we don't, if I can't get answers to them tonight, I'd ask that we delay vote on this. It refers to LIHTC projects, but this project is not on the 2019 LIHTC projects list. So, I'm wondering where they are.
We do have representatives here tonight from the group.
Good evening, Mr. Meadows, Mr. King, members of the board of supervisors. I'm Mike Graff from McGuire Woods, a bond lawyer, working on this transaction. And I have with me this evening PJ Hornick from South Port Development, who's the developer who'll be buying these two properties and renovating them. You may be referring to a list of 9% low-income housing tax credits, which is the competitive, sort of more lucrative, low-income tax credit program. These would be 4% low-income housing tax credits, and that's not a competitive process. So, that may be why it's not appearing on the list that you referred to.
And you reference affordable, but you don't define it. Could you define it?
Yeah, this is actually already a Section 8 project-based voucher property. And so, I think that the main affordability restriction under that program, and it also carries through the 4% low-income housing tax credit program, is that the residents only pay 30% of their income for rent.
Are these units, have they finished their 20-year term or whatever term that is?
They've been through the 15-year qualified project period under the low-income housing tax credit program, yes.
So, at this point in time, they don't even have to stay affordable? Is that true?
They would not have to. You're correct.
And what do you have that says that you will keep it affordable for how much time?
Well, there'll be affordability restrictions recorded against the property in connection with both the bonds, the 4% credits, and I believe also the HAP contract, which is the Section 8 contract for the property. So, it'll, in connection with this transaction, the affordability restrictions will go out for many additional years.
How many?
I think, I think it's a 15-year regulatory agreement associated with the bonds. I think the 4% tax credit program is a...
It's 15, plus 15.
Yes, so 30 years total.
And where is that in the document?
In what document?
In the document that we have.
It wouldn't be, that's not something we would have, that we would look at. You would just explain the project, but we wouldn't have that.
Right. It wouldn't be reflected in the consent resolution from the other jurisdiction, but in order for McGuire Woods to give a legal opinion at the closing, we'll have to report those affordability restrictions against the property.
So, those affordability restrictions are in your application, though? That you're asking to build affordable homes?
To renovate an existing affordable apartment complex, yes, ma'am.
And the 15 and 15 won't show up until a closing? Is that what you're saying?
Well, effectively, although developers submitted an application to DHDA with respect to the tax credit...
Okay, hold on a second. Is it true that there's no longer something called Section 8 housing?
That's not true. There are two types of Section 8 assistance. There's what they call project-based Section 8, which is where a property receives the ability from HUD by a contract to take advantage of the Section 8 program. And there's also individual housing choice vouchers. There's another part of the Section 8 federal housing assistance where a person can take their own housing assistance payment and carry it with them, really to any apartment.
And so, what kind of housing will this be?
This is project-based.
Okay. No voucher, no necessarily vouchered residence?
Not necessarily.
But could be if...
If someone shows up with a voucher, I think, I think that they have to, you can't discriminate against them.
Right, okay.
Yes.
Those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor B. Mark, any more questions? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Mr. Chair and Board Members, item B under new business is a resolution to deny the request to allow a private street for McNoyle Farms LLC. We did receive a call from the agent for the developer this afternoon that asked that this item be deferred, or excuse me, tabled to a later board meeting in order, I'm assuming, to provide more information to the board on this matter. That's totally up to the board as to what action you'd want to take. But we did tell them that we would convey that they had requested the item be tabled, so...
May I speak? I talked, I saw Mr. Neal this afternoon, and he said that there were further questions, conversations that he was hoping to have with Ms. Gibson and other people within the county. And he hadn't, he, for some reason, didn't know that this was on our agenda, and he would like a little bit more time.
Is there... Didn't they get notice?
Didn't they get notice?
Hey, there.
Didn't they get notice?
They got a notice, didn't they?
Oh, his staff did.
Does he know that the July 8th meeting has been adjourned and said the future meeting would be the...
I have no idea. All I know is that he would like more time.
26, 22nd.
The request that came in, I believe, and Vicki took the call, was that it'd just be tabled to an upcoming meeting, not...
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Is there a motion? Table it.
So moved.
I'll second the request, or the motion to table.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, under our rules, we have to set a date.
I couldn't hear you.
We have to set a date to where it's tabled to.
Till July 22nd.
Thank you.
And the initial motion includes July 22nd also.
Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes to table.
We'll make sure that they know that it will be scheduled for the July 22nd board meeting. Mr. Chair and Board Members, next item is a resolution to approve the boundary line adjustment with the town of Christiansburg for .36 acres adjacent to Giles Drive and Curtis Drive.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item under new business is a resolution approving a boundary line adjustment with the town of Christiansburg for 26.043 acres for the Falling Branch Road Reagan's Point subdivision.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
New business item E is a resolution approving the boundary line adjustment with the town of Christiansburg for, excuse me, 176.374 acres, the Cross Point Four Square Conference Center property.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I have a question. Okay, so since they run out rooms there and they have food there, do we currently get taxes from any of that?
To church.
Because if we do, then we're going to be moving into the town.
To church. It is a nonprofit.
Okay, so we don't get anything from it?
I'm nearly positive that's correct.
Because I know they run out rooms for football weekends and all that. So, nobody gets anything from that. Is that correct?
I'm nearly positive that's all part of their operation as a nonprofit. I will confirm that for sure, but I'm nearly positive that we don't get any occupancy or meal tax for that.
So, can churches, can they rent out rooms for football games?
Just like some of the churches, like Newman's, the Catholic Society rents out the spots for tech games.
Okay.
So, you know, for parking.
It's a fundraiser.
It's the same way. And that's, just like any charity, that sometimes they use different things to fundraisers, whether it's a yard sale or... So, I, Marty, I'll look to Marty, but that would be my guess is that they're allowed to be fundraisers, and same thing with daycare.
Okay.
Is there any more discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes to table.
We'll make sure that they know that it will be scheduled for the July 22nd board meeting. Mr. Chair and Board Members, next item is a resolution to approve the boundary line adjustment with the town of Christiansburg for .36 acres adjacent to Giles Drive and Curtis Drive.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
New business item E is a resolution approving the boundary line adjustment with the town of Christiansburg for, excuse me, 176.374 acres, the Cross Point Four Square Conference Center property.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Madam Secretary, call roll, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demoss?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Happy to vote aye.
Chair King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
County attorneys report.
Yeah, just one brief update. There's one more boundary adjustment coming. I just wanted to give you a heads up. That one's actually at the EDA's request. It's for the expansion of the Falling Branch Joseph Park. So, that'll be coming in late July. We'll schedule a public hearing, and then the hearing will actually be in August. The next step with these four we've already approved will be filing petitions over the next few days with the court, get a court order, and then it'll be in the town within probably a couple of weeks. And just to give you FYI, these are all requests by property owners through the town to go into the town for various reasons.
Thank you, sir. County administrator?
I'll just tag on to that as well. We'll pass all this information back to the town so that they can continue the process. And Marty's really helped Shepherd all of this through. I appreciate his help with that. Just a couple of things this evening. First off, it's been mentioned several times, we did get child number three married off this weekend. Three down, two to go. I'm not sure if it's the wedding that wore me out or keeping our three-month-old grandbaby till midnight after the wedding that wore me out. I know why young people have children and not old people. A couple of other things I'll mention. We did interview four consulting firms back on June 14th for the broadband study that we've been discussing. They were very good interviews, and I hope that we'll be announcing the selection of a firm within the next week or so for that. I'm very excited about getting that project underway. Also, last Monday, we had our tourism summit. Lisa and Irene did a fabulous job pulling that together. We had great attendance. I've sent an email out to the board members earlier this evening with a link to the presentations that were made at that meeting. I hope you have a chance to look at that. Also, last Monday, thank you very much for the time you spent last Monday night at the extended work session talking about county capital projects. We will have information back to you for your consideration at the July 22nd Board of Supervisors meeting. Which reminds me to mention to everyone that we will not have our first regular meeting in July. The county has July 4th as a holiday, and since we follow the state holiday schedule, the governor's also given July 5th. And so, with the schedule and whatnot, the board agreed to not have the July 8th meeting. So, our next board meeting after tonight will be July 22nd. Last thing I wanted to mention, at the VLGMA conference last week, my peers elected me to be second vice president of the organization for 2019-2020, which means I'm now in charge of ethics and budget for the upcoming year. So, I hope both of those are fairly quiet. But I was very honored, and that's all I have.
Good job.
Thank you, sir.
Supervisor B. See, I don't miss a name. You take the shortcut. All I want to say is I am, I am very glad to hear about this news on broadband. I think it's, it's nice to hear that we're moving forward on it and look forward to it getting accomplished. I rode through Floyd County today, and they are putting in fiber everywhere.
Digging up the ground.
They're digging up Route 8, they're digging up Route 221, everywhere. So, it's, we need to get on that bandwagon. So, I'm glad to hear that. And the only other comment I have is I really enjoyed the tourism summit.
Yes, thank you.
Learned a lot. Had excellent presenters. They gather details and statistics that I would have never even guessed, and how they're able to predict things is just, it's amazing to me. But it was very good, and I hope to attend another one. Thank you. Supervisor B.
You just reminded me of something. Did we ever get the tourism people connected to the athletic people at the schools about, like, when they have big events?
I know that was discussed, giving the calendars coordinated.
Yeah, because that would be really good. I remember we talked about that. I really don't have a report. I just hope everyone was able to see the newspaper article from the, about our New River Community Services Board and the peer mentors, and especially about Mr. Alderman. I've heard him speak twice. He's very moving. But I thought that was really good. I mean, we are really ahead of the game. I think I've told you before that our community services board is one of the top in the state. So, that PR was, I think, really good. Because, you know, substance abuse disorder is something that is all over, not just our county, but the state and the nation, as everyone knows. And so, any steps that can be made in a community to help with that are, I consider, to be positive steps, and I know you guys do, too. That's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
I have a couple of things. Last Friday and Saturday, I attended a meeting in Martinsville. And Saturday morning, the city manager and the mayor spoke, and they talked about their broadband and what they've done. Two things stood out for me. One was, they did their broadband in a circle so that they have a lot of redundancy. If there's a line cut, people can get service, you know, still, if there's a break in the line, or at least most people. So, I thought that was very interesting. As well as, their capacity that they laid is still not used. And they have a hospital on the line, and those big files of, I'm not even going to say MRI files or CAT scan files or whatever, move lightning speed because they have so much capacity in their broadband infrastructure. The other thing that I found very interesting is that they actually brought their county phone service in-house and saved tens of thousands of dollars every year by just providing, using their broadband to provide their own phone service.
And we're actually doing that here, too. We actually have voice-over IP.
Okay, great. Perfect. And then, on my way home from Martinsville, I pulled into the Reiner Fire Department that's under construction, and there was somebody there working, but it looks lovely. It's so exciting, and I can't wait for it to open later this year. And then, I'm going to give you my apologies. I will not be at the July 22nd meeting. I have a family wedding in Seattle that weekend, so I won't be back until Tuesday. That's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd?
I have a couple of things. I had a call today from a gentleman who, in my district, rides motorcycles. And he is very concerned about people mowing their lawns and blowing the grass out in the road. Maybe to the extent, he's had a couple of close calls. And I talked to him for some time, and he advised me, he'd already spoke with the sheriff's department. And he talked to Sheriff Parton, I think, in detail about it. And I'm not sure where the incident occurred, but an officer wrote a ticket through the state code and took it to court, and it was dismissed because the code section doesn't specifically say grass. It says debris or something along those lines. So, he's asking that we consider adopting an ordinance against it. There's another, at least one county that has done that, and officers can write the county ordinance instead of the state code. If it's something we can look into?
Yeah, we can look into it. See if there's authority.
I'd like to see us look into it as well.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea. One thing, I'm not going to be able to make the EDC meeting this Thursday. I have other commitment. I don't know if you can cover...
Hold on a second, let me look at my calendar.
I have one more thing while he's looking that up. I had planned to be out of town myself on vacation on the 22nd. I can't make it back.
that they laid is still not used. And, um, they have a hospital on the, on the line and those big files of, I'm not even gonna say MRI files or CAT scan files or whatever, move lightning speed because they have so much capacity in their broadband infrastructure. The other thing that I found very interesting is that they actually brought their county phone service in-house and saved tens of thousands of dollars every year by just providing, um, using their broadband to provide their own phone service.
And we're actually doing that here, too.
Mm-hmm.
We actually have voice-over IP.
Okay, great. Perfect. Um, and then on my way home from Martinsville, I pulled into the Reiner Fire Department that's under construction and there was somebody there working, but, uh, it, it looks lovely. Uh, it's so exciting and I can't wait for it to open later this year. And then, uh, I'm gonna give you my apologies. I will not be at the July twenty-second meeting. I have a family, uh, wedding in Seattle that weekend, so I won't be back until Tuesday. That's it.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd.
I have a couple of things. Um, I had a call today from a gentleman who, in my district, rides motorcycles. And he is very concerned about people mowing their lawns and blowing the grass out in the road. Um, maybe even to the extent he's had a couple of close, close calls. Um, and I talked to him for some time and, and he advised me, he'd already spoke with the sheriff's department. And he talked to Sheriff Parton, I think, in detail about it. And I'm not sure where the incident occurred, but an officer wrote a ticket through the state code and took it to court and it was dismissed because the code section doesn't specifically say grass. Uh, it says debris or something along those lines. Um, so he's asking that we consider adopting an ordinance against it. Uh, there's another, at least one county that has done that and officers can write the county ordinance instead of the state code. Um, I don't know if it's something we can look into?
Yeah, we can look into it.
And see if there's authority.
I'd like, I'd like to see us look into it as well. Yeah, I think that would be a good idea. Um, one thing, I'm not gonna be able to make the EDC meeting this Thursday. I have a other commitment. I don't know if you can cover-
Hold on a second. Let me look at my calendar.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm not- I have one more thing while he's looking that up. Um, I had planned to be out of town myself on vacation on the twenty-second. Um, I can't make it back. I'm not gonna be in Saddle, Washington or wherever you said you were gonna be. I could come back if a need be, but. I'm gonna be, I've got a Giles County hearing and I'm not certain I can make it. I can try. Okay.
What time and what day?
It's eleven-thirty.
On what day?
Thursday.
And where is it?
It's at the, um, Wikipedia Restaurant out in the airport.
CRC.
CRC.
I could attend if, if you-
My, they're in J and D Court and they typically run long, those are long hearings. I'm guarding Ned Lightman. Um, so I'm anticipating, and plus you've got a thirty-minute drive roughly from Perrisburg, you know, twenty, thirty-minute drive. So I would not count on me being there. If you can be there, that would be great.
Mm-hmm. Is it eleven o'clock or eleven-thirty?
It's eleven-thirty. It's a lunch.
Okay.
Eleven forty-five. Meeting actually starts at twelve to one.
Okay. I can be there. Thanks.
That's all, ma'am.
Thank you. Supervisor T.
Couple of things from the Fire and Rescue Commission. Um, one, during our, um, budget and, well, and our talk about capital last week, we wanted to know where they were at with the Charlesville Rescue Squad. There is a group that has met. They have not actively gone out and started looking at different sites at this point in time, but they have met and they've formed. They were probably looking for some direction and I think their first step is to start looking for a site. And so I would, and with your approval, I would go back to the Fire and Rescue Commission and say we, or talk with John and say, it's time to start looking at sites. What would your, and come back to us and rank them. You know, what's their favorite? What's their second? What's their third? Um, and look at possible sites. There was also a discussion about their existing building and what they would do with it. And John said that there had been discussions that they would turn it over to the county to sell, um, and, or utilize whatever. Um, and, and so that discussion was had. So they're, they're making progress, but as you know, that process will probably take a year. And looking at first a site, then what are their facility needs going to be, and then they can start moving forward. The other involves our sheriff and that was involved the nine-one-one authority. Uh, you may have known that their director had been ab, that position's been vacant and the sheriff's department has kind of stepped in. Well, not, the sheriff did not ask for this role. The nine-one-one authority specifically asked him to step into it as a management role for the time being and they'll, excuse me, be executing a contract in regards to that. Um, and the management of the nine-one-one authority, that has been going very well at this point in time. Um, again, I would stress the sheriff is not asking for more work, um, but this is a role that he was willing to take on. And so, um, that, they're moving forward with that.
And if I can add to that, as a member of the nine-one-one authority, we've been very appreciative of Brad St. Clair, uh, who has been serving in that role in the interim. Uh, with this agreement, it will allow several others to step in as needed to provide support as well. But Sheriff Parton, we really appreciate the support because there were, there were some real challenges with the authority. Um, and Brad has stepped up and really done a tremendous job in getting things stabilized. One reason the authority wants to continue that relationship, at least for the near term, is to allow us to continue to get new employees